An analysis for Booster Park.
Tim believes that a picture's worth. A lot.
Good afternoon, included in your packet was a inventory list from the equipment at Booster Park, pictures, model numbers, condition where we could figure that out. Did you want me to go through any specifics on that?
The, how extensive are the repairs to the, what do you call it, the drag? You don't call it a drag, you call it something else.
It's the infield rascal is the brand name, it's a, it's an infield drag. It is.
And I read the thing about it, but I couldn't tell whether that was a.
The teeth that go down to do the tining up and tilling up need to be replaced and that section parts.
It really is a parts issue more than anything.
Yes, it's a, it's hard to see from the picture, it's a piece that you pull a lever and pops down
Right.
teeth all along to dig up the infield. The one, I would like to point out, the one, the tractor and the flex wing mower that we have, I've talked to Buzz at the airport and he is very interested in using that as well. He has six foot deck now and he has to go down the side of the runway so he can go six to twelve, it cuts his time in half and so he is very interested in using that piece of equipment to share it and he said he would share in the maintenance and upkeep of it.
Oh no.
Buzz said that.
How many hours are on that tractor, do you know?
I do not know that. It was purchased two, two years ago, I believe.
Was it new or did it, was it used?
I'm pretty sure it came used.
I thought it was.
The two zero turn mowers are a year and a half and a half year old respectively.
And they're just in good condition? One of them's not in excellent condition. Oh, I see the camouflage and the things put on it. Hopefully that is something that we're well aware of, that maintenance is probably one of the most crucial portions to this equipment.
And further along, we have obtained donations of a push mower, rotor tiller, a backpack blower from Husqvarna, so the backpack blower will be used to clean off the equipment each time. And according to Piedmont Power, neither one of those have been back in for service since they've been purchased. So I don't know what service has been done internally, but it hasn't been back to the company for service.
All this stuff in the concession stand, are you proposing to do anything with or to that?
I guess we're seeking guidance from that as to which way we would like to go on that, whether we would like to contract that out and let somebody else run it or hire staff to do that and run it for a problem.
I think that aspect, we were going to get a little bit downstream from where we are today to make, you know, at least be able to come back with you with some options to pursue.
Listen, I did have a question on the utility vehicle. The, on your, maybe it's the last page of the packet, your page two of two it's called. They're about repairing the rascal and then getting the, what I take it is a slightly smaller tractor than when you have. And then a utility vehicle. Is there a reason we need both of those pieces? I mean, I thought they were, at one point they were pulling the rascal with a utility vehicle or something similar to that.
That has been the case and I think that's where a lot of the wear and tear has come on the utility vehicle.
They're not geared to that.
Not when you start talking wet fields and the pool, let the drag fields on, pools on it with a wet muddy field as opposed to a dry, just dragging it on dirt field.
So I guess my question is, what's the use of the tractor versus the?
Utility vehicle would be more used for hauling equipment, emptying the trash during the trash runs, doing the big equipment removal, or things we can put in the back of that to move around the park.
So just a miniature truck essentially, as much as any.
We have talked to the schools, Mr. Cole is willing to let us borrow their aerator and sprayer and spreader, those kind of things that they use randomly, not every day. The discussions about the infield groomer, that's something that they would use every day and we would use every day as well, so the feasibility of that is not quite as well.
Just sort of these lights.
Those lights were donated from one of the Charlottesville parks. They put one set up or lighted the football field area. Those lights are there supposedly all in working order to be put on a baseball field at some point. They never acquired the poles, raised the money, whatever to do that, they're all in working order.
So it's just the lights themselves, no poles, no miles, no?
No poles.
No distribution.
Didn't those come out of Penn Park?
I think so, or McIntyre, one or the other.
Yeah, I don't remember, I think it was Penn, but it doesn't matter.
And they would like direction from the board as well. If we're not interested in putting lights on the field at any time, they would like to give them to Madison County Parks and Rec who is looking to put lights on the fields. So it's something they want to leave here with us if we're interested in using them, but if not, they'd like to pass on the donation to somebody else.
Have we had a conversation with the leagues as to whether or not they want to try to do two games in an evening or are they happy just doing one?
I think they would use it more for practices. They play most of their games on Saturdays. They run into the evening practices with fall ball with it getting darker earlier. Summer's not as bad because it stays late longer. I think we would see use of it for if we held tournaments and could hold, play games longer into the evening down the road.
I mean, the ones I'm familiar with, they start a game at like five forty-five and then a second game at seven ten or some, something like that and that second game usually needs lights by the time it's over.
The league, the Cal Ripken League has had most of their games on Saturdays and they do practices during the week and game days on Saturdays. So they haven't run into with one field, one team using a field per night, the need for the lights.
Have you talked to the different soccer leagues as far as if they would use night lighting?
Oh, they would, the, the, the lights are down on the soccer field area. I think they would like to, they would, soccer, Orange Soccer Association would actually like to run an adult soccer league and have the lights wrapped, you know, let the kids play earlier and the adults play later. And the football, football program does use the lights in the fall. The lights come on before they end practice and basically the practice is up till dark so they have the lights on so folks can see how to get to the cars.
I'd definitely like to see us keep the lights at least for a while until we.
Yes, and it's not a storage, I mean, there's room in there to store them on the shelves.
Well, Dominion's going to be here in a little while, maybe we'll see how many poles they have lying around.
Exactly. They'll have a whole bunch of them if they want to redo the line.
Yeah, it's just like.
Yeah.
Have you budgeted anything to do around the maintenance on these pieces of equipment just so you have a starting point, you know where you are at least?
We just talked about that the other, the other day, putting it into the operating expenses for future as a yearly expense. I think for the spring we put in some kind of expense for maintenance on the equipment. Equipment maintenance fifteen hundred dollars, so there is some money in there for what you all approved last time for the end of this.
For this year, and Stephanie suggested that we get a service contract so they could come on and say you could change the order, do a routine, go through the process and probably the budget process.
So beyond having, taking another look at the equipment and thought about it for another two weeks, beyond what we approved last time, what's your, what's your biggest point of concern or need or whatever, as you see right now, to, to get us ready for spring ball, let me say it that way?
It's those three pieces of equipment at the end. You all gave a position in supplies and we need some equipment to do some things with those supplies. We have to have something. I don't know if we can make do with one or the other, but we definitely need to have something and we need to repair the drag. I don't think the infield groomer is, it's not an option. It's almost fifteen thousand as opposed to eleven thousand it was when the schools got it. So that's what a high school field, we're rec fields, we need something to get the fields in shape. The drag is usable with repairs and the small tractor with only six hundred and fifty hours will serve our purpose. And the utility vehicle would serve the purpose of trash removal, carrying equipment up and down the field and.
So no opinion you have on that one page is the, you talked about the thirteen.
Correct.
Page two.
Correct.
Does it make any sense to consider a trailer for that, that smaller tractor? And put that amount of money in something else? I don't know how you plan on operating it.
I think there are times when, like Mr. Cole came out to go with me around the park, that the two of us got in the gator or the mule and were able to go around the whole park. We're talking about taking over maintenance and having people come in to help us with seeding and dirt and that kind of thing. Not only do I think we need to transport our equipment around the park, but at times we have to have something to transport, a salesman or a representative or something that's here to help us with our stuff for the park. And those vehicles, we borrowed those type of vehicles, in fact, the same easy go we put in for has been loaned to us each year for playing in the park and we've gone and picked it up on the eight foot trailer that Public Works has. So it fits on the back of that to be used, that could be used at other places if we needed it for our own special events and things like that, the utility vehicle.
Any recommendations?
Well, I think, I think he's telling us that these.
He needs that thirteen thousand.
He needs that thirteen thousand dollars to, to really get us ready for the spring, I guess, is the way to think about it. It sounds, it sounds like a reasonable request. My only other concern is that we probably should get a handle on where we stand maintenance wise on it, particularly the main pieces of equipment, the tractor, you know, the two zero turns, those things, they're not serviced, they're not going to work very long.
And Jack from Piedmont Power has said he would come out and take a look at everything and let us know where we stand, so I can get him out there to do that.
I'd say that would be another item that should be done. You're not going to put a lot of hours on it for a while, but still you need to, you need a benchmark to start from, so.
Yeah, because unless we have service records, they all need to be serviced.
Right.
So we want to go to the thirteen thousand? I got a couple of nods over there, how about there? All right. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, sir, the motion would be to authorize staff to acquire the pieces of equipment, uh, drag repair, Kubota tractor and utility vehicle at a cost, a total cost of thirteen thousand dollars and we'll appropriate this from the board's contingency line.
Is that the motion you're making? I'm looking.
I'm not making a motion.
So I'm, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, so what is the disposition of this tractor and the bat wing? Is it over to Public Works? Is that what?
Is it, I'm sorry.
Well, you, you said that Buzz would like to have.
He would like to have, I mean, share use of it. It would still be, yes, he would basically drive up, pick it up, drive down the hill, mow it and bring it back. It would be stored still in the park.
And we'd send him a bill, right?
He said he would.
He said he would help with maintenance and.
I wouldn't make sure Kurt heard that part of the conversation.
There are no free rides.
That was totally for your benefit, Kurt.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll ask Mr. Hillbrand to search for an FAA grant in maintenance of that. Thank you, Jason, thank you, Tim, for, and Jason, for your all's efforts to get us to this point, for sure.
All right, next item is the Board of Supervisors legislative priorities. Mr. David.
Sure, Chairman, members of the board, we presented this to you at your August eleventh meeting. You asked for, to revise the priorities, we've made those revisions. We did, Allison helped me here with this, we did the red line strikeout method so you can see what's been changed. Bring this back to you today, a couple, couple of things. One, I invited Eldon James here to attend. He serves as the state liaison, legislative liaison for the planning districts, Rappahannock Rapidan and as well as George Washington. We make a, each one of the communities make a contribution to, for his services during the session and also during the regular part of the year. So I invite him forward just to offer some observations. He's looked at all of this over. While he's coming up, as you know, VACO came out with their preliminary legislative program yesterday. We sent that out to you yesterday, we've got a conference here, so with that is kind of where we stand. Eldon, if you want to enlighten us about where we are, where our agenda, you know, aligns with where the General Assembly's going and vice versa.
Crystal ball from over the corner over there. The, what you have put forward is what I would say is to be expected. These are the issues that, some of which we fight every year, some more successfully than others. Some of these, many of these actually show up in our regional legislative platform, which we're in the process of, of working through the first draft right now. Met with all the county administrators in this area a few weeks ago and had some discussions on that. I, I think that the messages that you are sending in your couple of pages here are very important. You're going to have a new delegate, you've got a new person to educate and we'll be developing, hopefully, a strong working relationship with your new delegate as we've had with your current delegate, Ed Scott. Ed, who will be setting the stage for tomorrow's Rappahannock River Basin Summit that Supervisor White will be attending. The, I think we can expect the governor's office is going to be coming forward with a pretty strong economic development, workforce development package. I expect we'll see some, you're going to see K through twelve re-benchmarking, so we'll see some legislation surrounding that. They'll be, I'm expecting the community college to come through with a, about a forty million dollar request that's aimed at workforce credentials, things that many of us have been talking about for a long time. And as, as some members of the governor's office have been touring around the state, they've been hearing, we don't have enough welders and we need help just in basic credentialing in, in fields such as that. So I think you're, I think we'll see some things, what the specifics are, it's too soon to tell. I do know there's some pretty significant policy discussions and budget discussions going on at the governor's office level now between Secretary of Education, Secretary of Commerce and Trade and to some extent Secretary of Health and Human Resources in the employment of people with disabilities. So there's, there's a cross secretary discussion, we'll see when the, when the dust settles, what we come up with by about mid-December. I think your message on local taxing authority, especially leaving your options open, the limited ones you have now, don't make them any more limited, is an important message. Other localities that I work with are, are saying the same thing. It gets real tough every time there's an attempt to further restrict B-pole and machinery inclusion, which are not popular taxes, of course, I don't know many that are, but B-pole is considered particularly egregious because it's a gross receipts. But each time the Assembly tries to tighten that, where do you go to maintain your service there? You're forced back to real estate. And Orange County, like so many, majority of real estate taxpayers are residential, so you're just shifting a tax from business to residential and that's tough. And we have to keep reminding legislators that, I think if B-pole didn't exist, I don't know of anybody that would propose that as a mechanism, because it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. But until there is a replacement, how do you take it away and not do a, a shifting that just causes more problems? So that's an important message. Continued discussion on transportation is important. Certainly reminding legislators that we do not support devolution. That seems to have cooled down a little bit from where it was a couple of years ago. But we are in an election year and all it takes is one crazy thing and suddenly an issue that you didn't know existed today becomes pretty important a couple of months from now just because of how it got, got raised in an election year. And we all can tick off different issues over the past thirty years that we've seen that occur. I, I don't see devolution coming back strong, but I think it has to stay on the agenda. That message is an important one. I know that regionally, a few years ago, what we were saying was we don't want it unless it comes with certain things and we articulated, went through a process of articulating what was important. And as time has gone on, with the concern about what tends to happen with shared funding between the state and localities, the regional position has gone to, no, we just don't want to do that. Not even under certain conditions. We're going to see some kind of legislation on the environmental front that deals with stormwater management and erosion sediment control. The major rewrite to stormwater management that occurred in twenty fourteen led to the chairman, Chairman Scott and Chairman Hanger of the two policy committees on conservation and natural resources sending a letter to DEQ last spring saying, set up a stakeholder group. We have iteratively changed the three statutes, erosion and sediment control, stormwater management and Chesapeake Bay, which doesn't affect you, but you're neighbors to the east, it does.
Well, it does affect us.
Chesapeake Bay Act, you don't come under the specific requirements. Does it affect you? Yes, but the Chesapeake.
Because the sewer plants are affected by Chesapeake Bay Act.
And I'm specifically referring to the land use portions of the Chesapeake Bay Act, which, which mandates certain things on the tidewater localities. The direction was, or the request from the two chairman was, take a good hard look at all three statutes. We have words that are the same, but they don't have the same definition across the three statutes. Not because anybody did anything intentionally, it was because they were worked on independently over a long period of time to try to align them. Some good things have come out of that stakeholder group. I had the pleasure or the punishment of, of serving on it, we have one more meeting. We do have one very thorny issue in that and you're going to be asked to provide, as with all your, your neighbors and colleagues, to provide input. And that deals with the administration of erosion and sediment control and, and stormwater management. You have for years managed your erosion and sediment control program, twenty, twenty to twenty-five years. After the two thousand fourteen legislation, you were one of many localities that chose to opt out and let DEQ run the program. I don't want to be unfair, but I think it's fair to say DEQ's not real enamored with trying to run a broad array of local programs. The stakeholder advisory group is representative of pretty much all of your interests, the development interest, local government interest, environmental interest, private sector consulting, both from the development side as well as the environmental protection side. We even have academia represented. And where we sit right now is a debate on whether the opt-out provision is going to remain. Virginia Association of Counties, your representative from the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, which is me, and Louis Lawrence, who is a PDC director from down in tidewater, have all maintained opt-out has to, has to remain for small local governments. The development community wants opt-out to go away completely. The environmental community.
What's their rationale for the?
One stop shop. They come to you for an E and S permit, but they have to go to DEQ for a stormwater permit. That is their entire argument. It should be, we come to you. That's their point of view. And our pushback is for the real small rural localities, it makes no sense to run the program. There is not enough activity. At some point, we hope there's enough, now I'm going to use my words now. We hope there's enough economic activity that you say, wait a minute, we need to run this program because it makes more sense so we can have it all local. But that's not the case today and that's part of why you chose not to run the program. And so there's a pretty healthy debate. There is a compromise proposal that's been put on the table and it's rather complicated. You're going to hear about it tomorrow afternoon when Melanie Davenport from DEQ comes and talks to the group. The, that would relieve you of some responsibilities, but would still have the administration, the issuance of the permits at the local level. So that, that for the sake of those people who have to get permits, they're going one place. And it would be a combined erosion sediment control and stormwater permit. Now, the idea of blending those things from the standpoint of administration and ease for the public makes a lot of sense on a broad scale. So that works for Stafford County, that works for Spotsylvania County. King George County, which is, is actually smaller population wise than, than Orange, but they chose, their board chose to run the stormwater program locally. They would just as soon have a blended program. But that doesn't mean that works for you, at least that's our position. The, the blended, you would, you could, the three options in the compromise that has been put on the table and we will be asking, or DEQ is going to ask everybody for input, so you're going to officially get something from me here in the next couple of days after we do tomorrow's exercise. First to be what will then be called a V E S M P. Right now, it's a V S M P, Virginia Storm Water Management Program Authority, okay? King George County chose to be a V S M P. For you, DEQ is your V S M P, okay? Now, but you still run E and S, blend the programs. You could choose to be Virginia Erosion and Sediment and Stormwater Management Program, V E S M P. I'm trying to do this slowly so I don't tie myself in knots because I'm trying to learn a new acronym. You could choose to do that outright, like King George had done or like the MS four locality such as Stafford, City of Fredericksburg have to do. There could be variation number two, you'd be the V E S M P and DEQ would provide the technical plan review. plan review support.
Are they going to gear up to do that?
What kind of delay is?
If this is a black hole proposition, then it, that's really not an option.
Excellent point, excellent point. You agree with the excellent points, okay? I'm not here to defend-
No, I understand.
-them, but exactly the points that we've raised. Third option, you would be a VESMP, DEQ would do the plan review, and DEQ would provide enforcement when a BMP failure that is covered by the construction general permit, now we're getting technical, and that's where your staff has to come and help you out, after the, you, as the, as the VESMP authority, have shown your due diligence in trying to obtain compliance. In other words, the owner of the BMP just isn't cooperating, then you could defer to DEQ, and they could use their enforcement authority. What they've tried to do with those versions is to respond to some of the specific concerns that were raised of why it's tough on the smalls.
Is there poss- is there possibility if DEQ is going to review the, the technical review, that you have a thirty, forty-five day automatic approval if it's not, I mean, put a little squeeze on them?
Let's, let's face it, those kind of limits sit on you when somebody comes in with a set of plans for certain things. Unfortunately, this is all Clean Water Act driven, and DEQ only has certain leeway under EPA before they get dinged by a bigger, and dinged or banged or something by a bigger authority.
Well, it would, it would put them in the situation of-
Having to get the job done.
-having the staff up to, to, to meet those kind of due dates.
You would also, the other part of that, 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 let's see, you have VESMP, then you have VESMP light, that was number two. Then there's ultralight, which is number three, and this is some of the ways it had been referred to as we had. This, this came out of four hours of debate Friday a week and a half ago. And the three of us who were taking the position of, you guys are too small, you need to keep your opt-out open, none of us were really particularly happy with this, but what everybody agreed was, we're going to take it back, get feedback, and then come back to the next, which might be the last meeting of the group, before there's any decision made on what legislation goes forward. The other is that, under that ultralight proposal, or the third option, you would have access to a regional pool of inspectors, and they could either be housed at a DEQ regional office, or at Solon Water Conservation District, or at a PDC, and it would come with some level of state funding to support it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, it seems to me that the option that has been left out of this is, is a regional option, or more, something that looked more regional-like.
You actually have the authority today. If, if, let's say you and Madison and Green wanted, you know, same way with your water authority, wanted to, to regionally run the VSMP program, regional inspectors, you could do that today. And there are a couple of options, there's the old-
It's kind of like the way the Solon Water-
Yes, like we should call it now.
You could, you could, you could do that, you could contract with Solon Water District, you could, you also could do it under joint powers agreement, for that matter.
Yeah, two or more can do anything that one can do.
Right. And within the VSMP law, it allows for that. I would maintain that you probably could do that even if it didn't, but-
The thing it really boils down to, as you know, Eldon, we don't have enough business to hire an FTE to do this.
Exactly.
So then we have to portion a current FTE, a full-time employee, to do some amount of this work, and then how does that work? Or we buy proportionate capacity from the regional level to meet our needs.
That's exactly correct. And, you know, I-
If the state wants to give us money to offset some of that.
Now, let me add, let me add a footnote, and that was, that was, you know, part of getting to something that was going to be put on the table was, you, you, localities that don't have but X number of permits a year, you don't have the resources to staff up unless you're taking it out of the general fund, which is what King George County chose to do. But that, their board made a conscious decision, they wanted a one-stop shop.
I know King George, they got a landfill.
We know something about that landfill, we know something about that landfill. The, if, if you chose to do that regionally, the idea was you'd pool those resources, and under this proposal, the state would help close the gap from that low level of activity with some additional funds. Now, what Louis Lawrence, the Middle Peninsula PDC director, has suggested to his localities is, maybe in your comments, you want to say, and if slash when the state funds get cut, DEQ has to take the program back over? When the Chesapeake Bay land use requirements went into effect for those localities, and I was county administrator in King George when that happened, and there was the promise of money, and there was money, we actually had a staff person that was funded that way that really helped us get the program up and running in the first couple of years. The next recession hit, and that money was gone, and the county was not relieved of anything. We still had to do all those activities, so we had, it was just, it was a shifting. And so, I'm sorry I've taken so long on that, but that's an issue that's going to be right in all of our laps here in the next, within the next few days. And there'll be a meeting again of the stakeholder group in October, and we're supposed to bring your feedback back. So I'll be asking your administrator, Supervisor White, will be hearing about it tomorrow, and-
Fire Bureau.
So, David, what else would you like me to get, or have I just beat things up enough?
Yes, sir.
I had one, in, in our legislative part, we do not currently address the issue of water supply. VACO has it in theirs, somewhat as an afterthought, but it, nonetheless, it is in there under the environment agriculture, I think is where it is now, if I can get it all. We haven't had the discussion yet, but it seems to me that, that, given what we know today about our water supply situation, that that, that is at least a potential addition to our list of priorities to, to allow the state to, to be aware of, and maybe help with some regional collaboration, and I, who knows where it goes, but at least it, it should be one of the items that's, that's on the list, it seems to me like. Do you have any sense of where?
Well, there, there is some study that is going on right now involving JLR on water supply, but it is focused, excuse me, in the tidewater area. Because as you get east of Fredericksburg, the Potomac Aquifer, which feeds the Middle Peninsula and Northern Neck, it is their water supply, is subject to drawdown. USGS's latest report on that topic indicated that there's, there's really more being taken out each year than is going in, that it is partially responsible for the land subsidence in southeastern and eastern Virginia, so you're having saltwater intrusion. And so their, their problems are so acute that the Assembly has, has stepped up and asked JLR to take a good hard look at the programs that the state has, i.e. the groundwater management area program, which is additional regulation. You don't have that here, but you get to Interstate ninety-five and east, and that covers the rest of the state, unless you're on a municipal system. So the question may be, different set of geography circumstances here, does there need to be a look in this part of the state as well? And, you know, all you got to do is think back to where this county was in October of two thousand and two.
Or, or in ninety-eight, or in ninety-two.
But the, you know, we had the, 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 the peak of the crisis was right before it started to rain in October of two thousand and two, and, you know, businesses were closed in this town because there was no water in the Rapidan.
Well, I, I, I mentioned it partly because of not only this, this study issue and the collaboration with the state, but, you know, there's all sorts of permitting issues that have to be dealt with, and so it, it seems to me that there's, there's a role for the state and those authorities that have responsibility over this area to start listening.
Let's, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to do some, some talking, because the focus has been east of ninety-five, the tidewater area, that how do we make sure that we're not neglecting these areas of the state, which have a very different set of groundwater issues than, than just surface water issues?
And, and, you know, I guess where it boils down to us is, we're trying to figure out what our future fifty-year outlook looks, and it's not looking potentially good, which means then we have to look extra tori- territorial, and then, then how, you know, everybody lives downstream from somewhere. And so I think picking up on what Mr. White's saying is that we could revise or add a, a priority to us to start looking on some state leadership for localities that, that are relying on surface water primarily to meet its needs. And that the surface waters that are within or adjacent to our, you know, that we can get to are, are maybe not sufficient, and then there are also the political decisions that have to be made in order to get somewhere else. We're not at Virginia Beach where we can go seventy miles to, to get into a lake. I mean, that's just not happening.
Well, the thing is, if you follow the Rapidan or the Rapidanic, those municipalities are dependent on the flow of the rip, that, there, there is nothing else. The town of Orange now has a small storage capability, grow for forty days or whatever, thirty-five, forty day, forty-five days, but that's one of the few. Otherwise, it's, we depend on rain.
And, and, you know, Stafford, Spotsylvania, and Fredericksburg downstream from you have all developed offstream storage facilities that depend on the flow, but not, you're not on a day-to-day basis, you're, when it, when it's peak, you're, you're storing it.
You can, you can base it on the average rather than the low-flow days.
Right. The December, the December Rappidanic River Basin Commission meeting, Scott Cutlass will be back in front of us to talk more about the state's water supply plan. That's already set on that agenda. I think that's an opportune time, as well as in your legislative platform, and I'm going to talk to your neighbors and see, maybe we want to put it in the regional as well.
Well, we haven't talked about it yet, but I, it, I just wanted to get your comment, whether you think it's a reasonable thing to be considered?
Yes, I do, absolutely. Gentlemen, it's a pleasure to see all of you, and look forward to seeing you tomorrow, and look forward to the next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eldon.
All right, next item.
Well, Mr. Chairman, before we leave this, do you want me to draft up something dealing with, with water and bring this back for you all to look at?
I'm looking at the, what they say in the state, it's only supports appropriate appropriations. That's-
I think we can do something, I think it's more the issue that you all are-
I think appropriations would be nice, but there's also permitting and regionality and I don't know, I haven't thought about it enough to know what all the pieces are, but it's-
But I'll, I'll, I'll try to, I'll pull something together for you next meeting, just bring that back, and, and we'll see where it goes. I think just having it on there gives at least Eldon the ability to talk to legislators, and that may be the best that we can do just right now.
Yeah, I, it, we, that's not, appropriations is just a small piece of it, and the old regulations and stuff like that. I was just looking at some history, and I'm looking at all the wells down at the eastern end when they were all full of iron and manganese and other things, and basically, that's why we're not drawing out of the Rapidan. So I'm not sure what the wells are like elsewhere, but-
They have all the same, same, fun things, you don't believe me.
All right, so I'll, we revise this way at a water supply, water resources priority, and then bring this back to you at the next meeting. Okay, that's, that's all I need for that, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is the, uh, transport policy.
Yes, sir, Chairman, members of the board, you had taken this matter up at your August eleventh work session, Chief Harkness, and Assistant Chief Moore came forward, and you all wanted to, to talk about this some more, so I put the policy and the presentation that was given at that date, and I'm just, you know, for discussion and guidance.
I will start by saying that, while I think there has been some improvement in the interpretation of this policy, that improvement has not reached the level of perfection, shall we say. We've had at least a couple of incidents that have been brought to my attention that look exactly like what was happening a few months ago.
Can you describe the incident?
Cardiac prior treatment. Told that the supervisor's policy was, you go to Culpeper, end of conversation.
Even though the individual had been treated at UVA before?
Even though. That's, I give you the most blatant one because it was, it was clear, there were three people heard that the supervisor's policy sort of pounded three different times. And, and it were, they were not volunteers, they were, my understanding is they were our, our careers.
Yes, sir, I, I, Mr. White made me aware of it, and I talked to Chief Harkness about it, and he looked into the call and confirmed, and said it was transported.
This more of an employee?
And, and why?
Following the supervisor's policy was the only reason ever given.
Oh, but, I mean, why? I mean, why are they, why are they doing something which is contrary to what-
Well, they, they were-
The public's policy is-
Well, it's, it's in that area that, you know, the patient's saying one thing, and, and they, they didn't use, as chief, and I'm trying to be accurate, that was not necessarily the decision that should have been reached by that medic crew, and they were counseled.
I mean, it says right here, it's acceptable to transport to a facility other than the closest that a patient has a recent medical condition that being medically followed there. It's determined that it's the best interest of the patient.
So this is, this is more of an employee issue rather than a department-wide or policy issue?
I thought that, or not.
But you have a problem, Jim, if you've got a policy and it's not getting to the employee.
I absolutely agree with that.
So, 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 we, we need to, I think we need to do two things, we need to find a more effective way, which is really why we're talking about this again, because I felt we need to be a little more forceful in how the board communicates its, its real policy via the, via the written policy. And so I think we need to do that, we, we need to make sure that, that we communicate our policy well, and then we, we need to hold employees responsible also.
And that, that is where I would really have to, because from what I've seen, and maybe it just hasn't been done enough, is this policy has been broadcast over the department, but not necessarily received or received as it should have been. And I, so there need, it sounds to me like there does need to be some department-wide training, for lack of a better term, so that everybody is fully aware and has been notified, and, you know, definitely help the-
Well, I, I continue to believe that, that, and I haven't put it this way before, but I think the, I think this board needs to adopt a simple paragraph, which essentially takes the part which is on the lower portion of page one, the, it is acceptable to transport to a facility other than, takes that idea and puts that up at the, up at the top so that, so the employees understand that, so that that's not a, because you, you might, you might read that first part and, and not realize that the second part is also very important.
And, and to reaffirm that, if you look further at the language in the Medicare benefit policy, in RID on the version I have in front of me, it says this, only, keyword, only mileage to the nearest appropriate facility equipped to treat the patient is covered. So there's the, there's the announcement, you know, if you don't really think about it, that, oh my God, you know, I'm going to do something here that can't even be reimbursed, which is not really what it says, but it certainly is easily, if you stop reading at the point I did, that's the impression you get, so I, I, I-
We shouldn't, we shouldn't be deriving our, our transport policy face the plunt. We should, we shouldn't be dera- deriving our, our transport policy based upon reimbursement.
Right, right.
I mean, it should be based upon medical need.
Right. And, and I, I now think, and I agree with Mark, that, that we probably are in a situation where we need to issue a newly stated policy. Just because there's too much entanglement with, with the past policy and, you know, let's announce a new one, put it out there and, and sort of start this, this process. Uh with, with, with a fresh mindset if nothing else. I don't have the words yet, but I think we can, cause it, like you say, it's a couple of sentences probably. Surely we have that in us.
How would you, how would you change it? I mean, I, I think uh, I think Mark's suggestion of putting that, that paragraph uh down at the bottom, right at the top.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I suspect that we need to list, list some situations, one of which is continuity of care. That should be a factor in the decision. You know, maybe another factor should be how egregious is the difference in distance and time? You know, if, if I'm sitting in uh, you know, Gordonville, Gordonville Gates.
Gordonville, Gordonville.
Uh and you tell, you tell me you're gonna take me north, that doesn't make any sense. What if I'm sitting in this building? It's a really close call. And so we might have to deal with that aspect of it so that we, you know. It, it, it's, I don't think it's ever gonna be, you know, a, a clear black and white kind of decision. And if we list the factors that should be considered to include continuity of care, the significance of the difference in either time and, and or distance. As well as the, the capabilities of the destination facility.
I think we need to, to always remember that, that we're talking about a very small number of cases.
Extremely small.
The vast majority of cases go off not hits, there's no problem. There was a situation recently where uh we got an email from Brian talking about, I guess it was the house fire and there were a couple of, of farmers that were transported. And I, I asked in the evening, you know, I responded by saying, why were they, why did they go to Culpeper instead of Charlottesville, which was closer? And there, there was a good reason why they did that. And it didn't have anything to do with policy, it had to do with, with those two. So the system worked, worked fine, it worked great. Yeah, I, I, I would agree. I think, I think we need to spend a little time, whether it's a board subcommittee or working with, with, with Brian and John. To, to just kind of revamp this, this page one here. Uh re, reformat it and make it a little clearer that, you know.
I, I agree that, that would be very positive, but also I think that there needs to be a, you know, because there's three different shifts. Three different shift supervisors, that it needs to be a department-wide education.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with that a hundred percent.
And, and petty as it may sound, that each employee signs a sheet after they've received the training, saying they've retreat, received it. Because then it's not a matter of, well, I interpreted or I didn't understand. They've been through the training, they've been told what the expectations are, and they're now easily held accountable.
I, 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 I don't agree with that, but I think, but I think that in each case where we find that somebody hasn't. There ought to be some serious discussion uh with that individual, to the point that's saying, okay. I mean, I get a, every time I fill out a call sheet, somebody's doing QI on it. And I get, you know, why didn't you do this test on an individual? Why didn't you do et cetera, et cetera? Uh, you know, and, and I work very hard not to get any of those. Uh and I think that the same thing is that, uh the people should be focused on, this is, you know, this is the policy. And if I'm violating the policy, uh that should not be acceptable as an individual's performance. And I think that should be very- Why would you object to them simply signing off that they had read the policy? I mean, why would you object to that? I wouldn't object to it, but I don't think it means much.
I've, I've, I've been in the situation where it meant everything under the sun because so many things are listed in a SOP or SOG manual. That the important stuff, if you sign for it, you're held accountable for it. And that's been in three different jurisdictions that I've worked.
And I see people signing for whole books like this.
Oh, yeah. They have to sign for their policy, uh personnel policies manual.
Sure.
They already do.
We do that every time we hire someone, so.
We, we do that now, don't we?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, so.
Well, the other question too I'd ask, um, I think this is a simple first question, is for the issues that we're having. Is it all across the board or is it specific people that we're having the issue with? Do we need to just train one guy or two guys, or do we need to train ten?
Well, that's my point, is going after the individual that's screwing up.
Well, and, and it's not necessarily screwing up, it's their interpretation of what they think that we require.
The, the instance that, that Mr. White spoke of, Chief Harkness, after I brought it to his attention, uh counseled that crew. Uh and certainly said that this really should have gone the other way, where the patient should have been transferred to, to Martha Jefferson rather than Culpeper. So uh the crew, uh as far as I know, noted that, that decision and how best. Um I, I think the suggestion of working this language to where you all are comfortable with it, uh I think is, is going to be important. Um it's been done since it was reevaluated in January of twenty-ten. It was originally written in two thousand nine, so I think it's appropriate to, you know, th- these policies are living things, I hate to use that over, overused word. But you all worked through it and then I, I, I think perhaps in that way you're getting everybody at a baseline. You know, and it's communicated out and things and, and, and really what you're doing is trying to empower them to use some discretion in the field and using their judgment. And, and they may not have had that, that comfort level in the past and, and wanna be able to communicate that comfort.
Well, I mean, I've had people come to me and say, I don't wanna go to Culpeper because I heard that they were, they didn't do very good work. I mean, that's, I'm talking about Culpeper and Mary Washington. Well, the last time I was at Mary Washington, uh, uh they, they didn't give me whatever I wanted, you know. And so there, in my case, I don't have a problem because they're pretty much equidistant between the two. But uh, so that, those I don't consider necessarily rational reasons for diverting. But if you're saying, uh as I did coming for a patient down here, well, I'm supposed to be getting a test uh down at QB, uh Martha Jefferson. You know, and uh, and I'm having a problem now. I mean, that's, that's pretty obvious.
I think the concept of continuity of care uh is, is kind of the operative phrase with this. How, how would you all like to proceed on this? Want to subcommittee the board, uh I've, or you all take this up?
Why don't we, why don't, why don't you give us a new draft? Taking into account, uh I like Mark's comment, putting that continuity of care higher or, or, is there anything else you think that ought to be in there?
Yeah, I mean, you can show us some things we can comment on it and see.
I'll, I'll uh, I'll get with the chief and, and we'll revise this, certainly moving, i- i- in my mind's thinking kind of in a construct is that. You were to transport to the closest if the patient has a recent medical- If this doesn't apply, then all these others, you know, the trauma and the nearest and, and life saving, so it really sets it out. It's kind of at, at the top, top of it all. So uh let us come back with a draft and, and I'll circulate that to individual board members. And then we'll, from that gather this up to, to have another work session.
Okay, that's good.
Is that all right? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
That concludes our work session, Mr. Chairman.
Huh? Remat's okay.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have uh, uh one addition to the uh, uh agenda. Item eight D, which is the certified, two thousand fifteen certified statement of assessed value for public service and motor vehicle carrier companies. Uh I would also like to move item nine, uh right after the consent agenda. The individual that would be supporting that uh does have a, a need to go, Stephanie's not here and, and uh somebody else will be asking any questions. It may be fairly straightforward, but I'd like to move that up to, right after, uh, number nine, put it right after five, right after the consent agenda. Any other uh change?
What was, what was the, the new one?
The new one was eight D, the cert, two fifteen.
That came out on.
That-
Oh, it's, okay, it's, it's-
It's on, it's on here, but it was not on the original uh posted one.
Gotcha.
Any other changes to the uh agenda?
I have not, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion secured. Okay. Uh next item is the presentation of proclamation for National Farm Safety and Health Week. So you representing the entire farm, farm community today?
Yes, sir, we try to. A proclamation to declare the week of September twentieth to twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, as National Farm Safety and Health Week in Orange County. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of September twentieth, two thousand fifteen, through September twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen. As National Farm Safety and Health Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas, across the nation, county and state, organizations have committed to making safety a top priority this fall. Through the National Farm Safety and Health Week campaign. And whereas each year since nineteen forty-four, the third week of September has been recognized as National Farm Safety and Health Week. And whereas this year's theme is egg safety is not just a slogan, it's a lifestyle. And each day of this year's campaign focuses on a different aspect of farm safety, from rural roadway safety to children's safety and tractor safety. And whereas agriculture is more than seven times as hazardous as other US industries, with over five hundred fatalities in two thousand thirteen. According to the census of fatal occupational injury. And whereas farmers put in many hours and accomplish difficult tasks, which include operating heavy machinery, handling livestock. And working under hazardous conditions and often work alone in their industry. And whereas to keep farmers safe, a robust training and education program is critical. Now, therefore it be proclaimed on this eighth day of September, two thousand fifteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby declares the week of September twentieth, two thousand fifteen. Through September twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, as National Farm and Safety and Health Week. And the start of the year-round effort to promote safe farming. And be it further proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors urges all those who farm to join the Virginia Cooperative Extension. In its efforts to make farm safety a top priority. Sign and seal this eighth day of September, two thousand fifteen, the H. Frank Chairman.
That's all right, I'll catch you. So you're out there telling everybody I'd be safe?
We're trying to. Matter of fact, we're gonna have a-